I would like to call the March 26, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting to order. Will everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic and to its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Just a reminder to everyone, if you have a cellphone, please put it on mute. Thank you. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Carrie?
Present.
Chilson?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Parker?
Whackler?
Present.
Kincaid?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Mr. Carey?
May I move the, we approve the agenda and the consent agenda as presented?
May I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
February 26, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes. Resolution 2025-009 authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with BDO USA PC for external audit services in the amount of $63,000 for Schedule I services and $15,000 for Schedule II services sponsored by the city manager. Action Memorandum 2025-004 confirming the mayor's appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission sponsored by the mayor. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Anyone want to comment on any of those items read by the clerk? Please just step forward and seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the approved agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Now, are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the agenda and the consent agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Uh, next item on the agenda for me is, uh, I have a proclamation I was going to read for the Sexual Awareness, myself, Awareness Month. Okay. Whereas sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in the Central Kenai Peninsula, and no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault alone. And whereas sexual violence prevention can be better addressed through education, counseling, support of victims and survivors, and increased support for service agencies in collaboration with the Lee Shore Center. And whereas the Lee Shore Center, its staff, and volunteers work year-round to address sexual assault by providing 24-hour crisis service, offering support to those impacted by sexual assault, and providing prevention, education, and survivor empowerment and information to schools, churches, and civic organizations, as well as to medical, mental health, law enforcement, education, and criminal justice personnel. And whereas the Lee Shore Center continues to develop and improve the quality of service for the most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence. Whereas, the theme of Sexual Assault Awareness Month for April 2025 is Together We Act, United We Change, a campaign that embodies the power of collective action in addressing and preventing sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Now, therefore, I, Paul Whitney, Mayor of the City of Soldatna, Alaska, hereby proclaim April 20, April of 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In the City of Soldatna, I urge all citizens to support and assist the Lee Shore Center as it continues its efforts to bring real hope for freeing the Central Kenai Peninsula from the tragedy of sexual violence and exploitation.
Thank you, sir.
I hope your march went well today.
It did. We had good weather. It didn't rain. I was very thankful, so.
Good, because it was raining a little bit this morning.
As I'm driving in, I'm like, please stop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, our next item on the agenda is Presentation with Prior Notice. Introducing, introducing 100% Communities in the 907 Navigation App. This is Abby Stroofert and Kathy Gensel. And hopefully I didn't mangle the name too bad.
Okay. Don't turn it down. Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Okay, there we go. All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Abby. As Mayor Whitney mentioned, I'm here with Kathy Gensel. I'm a consultant in the field of prevention, and I work on projects statewide and locally. And this is one that I'm super proud to be part of. So I want to share a little bit about 100% Communities with you because that was the culprit for the app. It's something that happened right here in our community and took off statewide. So we're really proud to be able to say that. So 100% Communities, um, if you wanna, okay, and one more. So 100% Communities is a national framework. It looks at access to services and the impact that has on the ability of a community to thrive. This quote here, I think, is important. It kind of grounds us in our goal here. If you want to understand someone's health, don't just ask about their symptoms, ask about their ZIP code, education, and access to resources. Next slide. Um, and one more. I'm gonna skip through some of these since it's 10 minutes. So this particular framework is a national model. It actually came out of a tragedy in the child welfare system in New Mexico, and we heard about it, um, this model, and really looked at it. A small group of us came together in the community. We read the book, we talked about it, and officially launched this in 2023. This model looks at 10 vital services that are necessary to be accessible in every community for a community to thrive. Five of them are considered survival, which are just your basic needs, right? So housing, transportation to vital services, food security, behavioral health, and medical and dental care. The other five are considered thriving, so what a community needs in order to get out of survival mode into a place of thriving, and that is parent support, early childhood education, community schools, youth mentor programs, and job training. This model is really, I think the best way to explain it is it's a community organizing framework for prevention work, but from a lens of improving access to these 10 vital services. Excellent. And one more. One more. I'm gonna skip here, skip one more. Okay. So the first step in this framework is really to get, collect a baseline, like most. It's a data-informed model. And so our first step was to launch a survey, and I'll share that shortly. But before that, when we started this process, we started getting some statewide interest. This model is new and catching interest across the whole state. One of those entities is the Alaska Impact Alliance. They work on child welfare reform across our state, and they heard about what we were doing, they loved what we were doing, and they felt like that model would benefit so many other communities across the state. So since they came down, learned about what we were doing, and came alongside us, they actually launched this model in two other cities, Juneau being one, and then Metla Catla being another, with several other across the state that are interested. And that's, to us, just a prideful moment that it originated here. So this is important, and I'll tell you why, because they have become a pretty major partner in this effort. So, um, you can skip this one. They took our survey. Where our survey ended, we ended with that 66% kind of looking at just what the access to services are in our community, and they enhanced the survey. So we look forward to relaunching that second iteration of the survey this summer. You can go forward, go forward. What they offered us, though, was they came alongside us and provided us a dashboard online. So you can actually view our survey results online if you go forward. Um, on their site, under the 100% Communities model, um, one more. There are all three of the city's reports. Go over, I think, two more. We had 974 people take our survey, and then one more. This is what it looked like. So if you view those as gas gauges, ideally, you want a full tank of gas. All 10 of our services scored at about 60% or lower in accessibility across the board. So we have a lot of work to do when you look at it like this. You can keep going now. So what we did after launching the survey, we formed the next, we entered the next phase of the, um, framework, which is really building action teams around all 10 vital services. So some of those were in place. Kathy Gensel being a lead of housing, had a meeting and a work group in place. I personally lead a group called Safer here in our community, which is now considered the Parent Support Action Team. So we didn't recreate the wheel. We really took inventory of who, what are the meetings, and what is the work happening currently? How can we bring that under this umbrella? And then which of these vital service areas are not existing in our community? And we formed those action teams. So we now have 10 action teams meeting on a regular basis. But I think what's most important about this model is that each action team has at least one and possibly two leaders that come together on a monthly, or a bimonthly basis to talk about what's happening inside those action teams. And I think that that's been the most impressive component of this because we're finally at a place where we're talking about how much these intersect. When someone comes in with housing insecurity, you can't avoid the conversation about food security, right? Or possibly like childcare assistance. Often, if someone especially coming, is coming in with housing insecurity, they probably could benefit from all nine other vital services. So if we, as organizations and agencies, don't know what's happening and how to refer that individual in and out of those other vital services, we have a problem. We're not, we're not serving that person in a holistic way and getting to the root cause issues. So that's, to me, the most beautiful part of this model, and we're seeing it play out in these meetings. So next one. Where are we now? So after launching the action teams, we had some real conversations about what does resource navigation look like in our community? So when someone moves here, they have no support, maybe no history living here, whatever it may be, how are they getting plugged into these vital services? There's speculation, maybe if they have kids, it's the school system, maybe if they have a medical provider, that could be a way, maybe the public library. But there was really no firm entry point for a family here. We also looked at what are the, um, resource guides available to folks? Who, who's offering that? And what we found is lots of organizations offer this. Lots of different agencies and organizations in our community were spending the time creating resource guides that were taking, first of all, very timely, but also difficult to keep up to date. So could be potentially offering this to somebody that isn't even up to date. So, if you'll go over one, we did find the most comprehensive resource guide was put out by Change for the Kenai on an annual basis, a coalition here in our community. It is very comprehensive and fairly up to date. The challenge is it's a 37-page PDF document online, very costly to print, and a lot for one entity to put out. So we had conversations about what this could look like, what could be a technological solution here. And that's where the Alaska Impact Alliance came in and supported us with building out this app and online platform for what we call now is 907 Navigation. So if you go over, one more, one more. This is the, um, video, if we can pull it up. Hopefully. No? Okay. Keep going. Oh, I don't know how much time I have left. Is there a? Okay. Okay. Keep going. All right. So this app is available on Android and iPhone. You could download it right now or after this meeting. And if you go over, this is what it will look like in the stores, in the Google's, or the app stores. You can select your language upon downloading it, and then your location, or statewide, if you're looking at that, down at the bottom, um, once you get past your location, it's broken down into different categories. Resources is the first one. You can look through all 10 of those vital services, and then they've also added seniors, disabilities, and veterans. Inside of each of those are gonna be our local resources that apply to that particular vital service. Go over one. The calculators is the next tab. It is an eligibility calculator. You can see here that you can look into these programs, and it will tell you if you qualify. If you do qualify, there's a link to go outside of the app and enroll in that particular program. And the next one is systems navigation. There are like 20 systems built into this. The Alaska Impact Alliance has been working with state agencies and systems-level folks across the state, as well as individuals with lived experience. If you go over one more, to identify within those particular systems, what are some of the scenarios that Alaskans are challenged with in order to navigate that system? So you can see here, the Office of Children's Services, literally, what are the, what are these acronyms? That was one of the issues. So they work with experts in that field to help answer those particular scenarios within those systems. And there's video tutorials, step-by-step support, and links embedded in that side of the app. That little raven down at the bottom, that is an AI bot built into the app. You can ask it questions, and it will take you to resources or systems in the app, as well as, um, solutions outside of the app. And then you can favorite things. So if there's a certain food pantry you go to, or a specific system that you're needing support with, when you favorite it, if you go over one, you can see it will show up in your favorites for easy access. And then finally, in the settings portion, um, you can change the language, you could change your location, you can contact AIA, the Alaska Impact Alliance that owns the app, and, um, all of those other things. There's FAQs there. Over one more. I think the most important piece for me to mention, and then I'll be done here, um, the recommend a resource option. This is at the bottom of the resources tab within the app. This is important because this is the beauty of this app. This, this app is provided to our community, and we get to decide what resources are put into this app. So we essentially get to go in there and recommend the resources that we feel are relevant and important for residents to thrive in our community. It's not a group of individuals sitting in Anchorage deciding what works for us. And so the more that we have people downloading this app, going through it, identifying what resources are in there or need to be added, or added, or possibly edited, the better, the more comprehensive and helpful this app will be. Um, and that is it. I think it's just, yep, that's it for my presentation.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Carey?
Thank you very much for what you're doing, and I know there are numerous involved. And as you said, this is a new model. When I heard you say, uh, nine, or look at ZIP code, I'm very interested to see what it says for 99669, quite frankly. Certainly, as you know, one needs balanced data if you're necessarily going to develop more comprehensive programs that fit. And so my question to you, and I know you're just beginning, and so, what, what is being done to be sure that the, the different groups providing data are comprehensive as compared to possibly more, um, more self-interested? And I don't have the right words there, but I'm just, are you able, and how will you continue to be able, to get a good balanced view of what's needed?
Well, I think that'll be in the survey efforts. One of the things I mentioned is that the Alaska Impact Alliance worked with a team of Dana analysts to build out the survey. So we, the survey that we launched initially to get our baseline was pretty basic. It was what was provided us, to us through the model. Now that the Alaska Impact Alliance has gotten involved, I'm very interested to see the, the next iteration of it because it's going to dig so much deeper as to what are those access barriers specifically, not just, is it accessible? And I think that in some ways, that will offer us more, uh, valid feedback from the community on why that's not accessible.
Want to follow up on that? Go ahead. I noticed, again, you had an overall number of respondents, and then you had all the communities listed by percentages and different things. And so that, for 99669, will that reflect only the responses from people living in, I'm gonna say Soldatna? Or is it the responses for the whole group? Because that, to me, is sort of important.
Yeah, it's responses for the whole group, but with this new platform, which the data analyst team that I'm talking about there with Qualtrics, which is a pretty, um,
Sophisticated.
in-depth platform, they are able to pull out a lot more data and divide by demographic and location and all of the, the different things. So we can kind of break it up and look at how that looks across the Central Kenai Peninsula.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Mary.
Please, Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mary Whitney, and thank you for the presentation. It was informative. Two, two questions. One is you, you talk about the resource guide, and the Chamber of Commerce, um, when they're contacted about, by people who might be locating or relocate, or looking at locating here, send them information. Is this something that the Chamber could also provide to people? And then my second question is, um, and I know Kathy's aware of this, but the hospital is also starting a community needs health assessment, and how will this plug in with the community needs health assessment?
Yeah, um, that, that is a great idea to partner with the Chamber on this. We also think about like the school district and potentially, you know, how teachers and counselors could be utilizing this app with their families. And so absolutely, I think this could be a major resource. It's as simple as just getting the bar, or the QR code out there so they can download it. And then your question about the community needs assessment, Change for the Kenai has been the backbone of 100% Communities, um, and that is a coalition of the hospitals. And so they're very involved with this, been very supportive from the very beginning. And we are already in conversation about how could we streamline surveys in our community? I think there's a little bit of survey fatigue happening, and so looking at if there is a way that we could combine a community needs assessment with what I'm calling a community access assessment, and how that could talk to one another could be really interesting. So there is some conversation about merging and partnering. I don't know if it'll happen, but it would be an interesting survey, to say the least.
Probably not this year, but maybe next time.
Yeah. Dreams.
Any other questions from the council? I do have, um, one question and a comment. When we talk about the community, are we referring to the entire peninsula, or just Kenai and Soldatna, or, or just what? What is the community?
More the Central Kenai Peninsula, and that had to do with funding from the Change for the Kenai and what their service area. So it really mimicked kind of like the hospital service area due to the, they were really the backbone of the project.
And my comment is, I read the book, um, took a while.
Wow.
It's, it's a pretty, what, eight, nine hundred pages or more? But it's very informative and very comprehensive, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Soldatna Area Citizens Incorporated, Lisa Riley, Executive Director.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to come before you. As you know, I'm not Lisa Riley. I'm Pamela Gillum and I'm a board member for the Soldatna Senior Center. And this is Kevin Barrett and he is also a board member. And we've, we're appearing here for, in front of you tonight. We have sent a letter in requesting continued funding for the, oh, go ahead.
Is that microphone on?
Can you hear me? It says it's on.
Is it light on?
Yes. Okay.
You might need to get a little bit closer, though.
Okay, we can do that. We have sent a letter in requesting continued funding for the senior center. In the past, the city of Soldatna has supported us. And a couple of years ago, we had some problems and we are working through those. And we're very proud to say that we have come a long way from where we were two years ago. And we sent in our financial statements from the, the financial audit that we had done at the request of the, the city council. And so we're here to present those. And then we have a little bit of additional information. A little bit later, we have, we have a slideshow that we're going to show you as well. I'd like to say that we are part of the 907, what was just presented. They've got us in there as well. So we're excited to be a part of that as well. Did you have a question? Oh, no. Okay. Just to start out with, our, the results on our financial statement or our financial audit was very favorable. We, this was a 2023 financial audit. It was completed in December of '24. So this is just a few months ago that we actually finished this audit. The most important thing that, this is a pretty long document, so I won't read everything. It would take most of our 10 minutes to do that. But I think the most important thing that is in this audit is the opinion of the auditors. The auditor state, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material aspects the financial position of the Soldatna Area Senior Citizens as of June 30th, 2023. And the changes in its net assets and its cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." And that means that we have complied with all required laws and regulations and that are, the books that were represented by the Soldatna Senior Center are presented fairly as the management has presented those to the auditors. There was a lot of speculation and I'm very glad to see that that has been cleared. So. One of the other things that we have to decide on, once we have a financial audit is, is this a going concern for the next 12 months after the financial statements have been presented? And there is no doubt, the management and the board has agreed that this organization is healthy and will be thriving long, much further into the future than just the next 12 months. So we're very proud to present that. Let's see. Most of you got a copy of the financial statement and I'm not sure if you have any questions. Kevin's here to help answer any questions if you have any. I'm going to go on to the, just to highlight a few of the things on our financial position. We currently have about 1.5 million in total current assets. Our liquid unrestricted funds are about 1.2 million. And our current liabilities are 196,000. So we're less than 15% of our liquid assets in, that we owe in, in future liabilities. So that would represent pretty well. Okay. Go past to most, most of the rest of the information is pretty much just notes on the financial statement telling how they arrived at a lot of the data. If there's anything that you're particularly interested in, I'd be glad to fill you in on that. There's, it, it covers all of our property and equipment and everything is stated fairly and accurately according to the audit. Nothing was misstated. I think one of the major concerns was for the, for the organization was whether or not there was any malfeasance going on. And the audit found absolutely none of that, which was a relief. There was some mismanagement, but there was no other, nothing other than that. And that, in the last two years, we've have an executive director that has taken the bull by the horns. And she's not only our new executive director, but she also had about five years of working with the organization before she became into power. So she had some institutional knowledge as well, which was very helpful in getting the organization back on its feet. Let's see. I think that's what I want to cover right now. Does anybody have any questions in regards to our financial statements?
No questions from the council. Ms. Whackler.
Thank you for coming in to present. Really appreciate it. I know one of the concerns that the participants, occupants, people who go there.
Members.
Members. Some of the members were actually concerned about operations. Have you gotten feedback? I see there's a number of members, maybe, possibly, in the audience today. Is the general feeling that it's providing services better now than it was last year?
Well, there we go. We hear the background. Yes. And would everybody that is here for the Soldatna Center? That's very true. But would everybody that's here for the senior, would you, center, would you like to raise your hand? So we've got considerable, have some considerable support here.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate you.
Yeah. So I, I think there's a significant turnaround in the attitude and, and just the, the ability to enjoy the center again. That was pretty blue a couple of years ago and that has significantly turned around.
Vice Mayor Parker. Ms. Hutchings.
This audited statement ended for, in our fiscal year 2023.
It ends in June 30th of 2023, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I printed off that 990 and it showed that for that year, that the senior center lost $771,000.
That's correct. And it also states that in this, in the financial statement as well. That is correct.
Okay, so you haven't got the one ending June 30th, 2024, which should have been filed by now.
The 990?
Yes.
I, I can't speak to that, but our executive director can.
Yeah.
Do you know, do you have any idea what's the final?
So we don't have a current 990, then is what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker.
You know, I always have a tendency to change my mind. So we will be getting our budget cycle for the next fiscal year and we will be having those discussions in May and June of this year. And there is a process that the city goes through for getting requests from local organizations if they want to receive funding. So somewhere in your files, you should have that information if you want to again submit a request to the city for funding in the upcoming 2026 fiscal year.
I believe that we've submitted those documents and that you, you now have those. We've submitted that letter, so it is part of your records.
Ms. Carey. I want to tell you how much I appreciate you here. And I want to say especially when I see the young people here getting to see again, each of you. I first got on this council 27 years ago. It was one of the most difficult decisions I made and I, I can't speak for anyone else, but I think others would say it, to not fund the Soldatna Senior Center. We did it, I did it because I did not feel that there was a credible service being provided from what we were being told. To me, the largest and the most positive thing here tonight is the number of you that are here, that you would show up. And there is no question whatsoever in my mind, having kind of lived here a long time, that I know that you are here because you know what's going on and what's going on is now correct again, as it has been for most of the history. So again, certainly as the vice mayor said, and I can speak only for myself, but I think you're going to have a very positive response appropriately from this council as we move forward. And I thank you that you have not given up on the, the center and again, the work that they provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Anything else from the council? Ms. Whackler.
Um, yes. So I just wanted to say that, I'm, you guys probably know this, but Soldatna High School NHS is coming tomorrow for you guys' lunch. And so I'm planning to come and I signed up and I'm excited to talk to you guys and hang out with you guys. And yeah, so there's plenty of us and there's a lot of cool people if you guys want to come for lunch.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I'd like to introduce our cook who's here today as well, Ashley. And he has made a significant difference in our meals. So you will enjoy them. Yes, good. Okay.
Anything else? I do have one question. I may have missed it when you were speaking, but I know a couple of years ago you had lost some of the grants, the state, state grants. Has that been reinstituted? Are you able to qualify for those now?
We will be applying for those as soon as we're eligible. We have received support from the community as well in getting those, those grants back. And we will be, we will be requesting those grants back as well. And that's a significant grant for our food program. And of course, having the grant from the Soldatna City Council and the city of Soldatna will be another really nice add-on to be able to present to them, showing that we do have the community support. And so, and we have that community support from the city of Soldatna as well.
When will you be able to be applying for those again?
In about two or three months.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a three-year term for those grants. So we're preparing now to, we're getting prepared now to apply for those grants. And we've even had some, you know, some support from the, even the Kenai Senior Center, who's this, you know, the people from the seniors in Soldatna need to eat too. So they're, they're supporting us in this, getting this grant back as well.
Thank you. Anything else? Do you have anything more to add?
Did I miss anything? We do have something more to add. Yes, we'd like to show you a slide of what we're currently doing with our senior center. And Lisa Riley, our executive director, will be presenting that for us.
And it's moving on its own, so I'm not, I'm not doing anything. We'll watch.
And that's the PowerPoint. And I just wanted to say thank you to the city council for listening to us. I fully understood your concerns two years ago. Now, I did not have experience as a director when I took this position. I have since gone to Four Acre Group and attended a certificate training in nonprofit management. I have attended a grant writing class at the college. And we have righted a lot of the wrongs at the senior center. And somebody says to me regularly that she's happy today because the joy is back in the center. And that was the goal. So I just wanted to say thank you and please come down and see what we have going on. Have lunch, get to know people, see what we're doing in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, moving on to the next agenda item. And actually, I've got to get a picture of that young man back there. Oh, I think he just opened his eyes. Okay, next is number five. Public comments and presentations, items other than those appearing on the agenda. Three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes aggregate. And we'll give everyone time to move. Okay, this is time for public comment, for any item not appearing on the agenda. And please step forward if you have anything you would like to comment on and state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Got to bring this closer here. My name is Mitch Micho and I live on Shirley Way, about 500 feet away from the city of Soldatna. So I'm not a resident, but I'm, I was not as close as I could get 25 years ago when I moved here. I am here on behalf of the Three Friends Dog Park. And I'm not here to ask you for any money or ask you for any changes. I'm coming here just to give you an update and express a great thank you from all of the users of Kenai Peninsula Dog Park. I was told by the folks at Park and Rec that, that a dog park is the second most visited park in the city. And to give you an idea of who visits there is kind of a, like a, like an international thing. There's, I've met people from Fairbanks. There are regular people who travel to and from Soldatna and Cooper Landing, who stop over there every day with their dog because they've got business in town if they're doing any shopping. Some residents from Homer are traveling up and this is a stop for a cup of coffee, pick up some groceries and also to bring, bring their dogs. And they love it because it allows them to not leave their dog at home. Some interesting folks, you know, it's, it's, it's located in an area which has a lot of apartment buildings. And that allows a lot of the apartment dwellers who, who can live in places that allow dogs to bring, bring their dogs out. So oftentimes dogs escape from the apartments and they show up at the dog park. And we kind of know them too, because then we let them in and we know their, their owners are going to be looking, looking for their first. Interestingly, we have a lot of locum nurses and travel doctors. And I met a young lady, not a young lady, she's probably, she's not yet. Anyway, she's a nurse. All right, I know, I always, I always dig a hole, a hole for myself. She took the job here as, as a locum because she had read on the internet that there was a great dog park there, here. And that's, I mean, that's, that says something, that something as innocuous as a dog park would actually attract, attract, attract people. We have a lot of seniors. I've watched a elderly man go through a couple of stages of dementia. And to this day, he still shows up at the dog park. And he does some recreational dog poop picking. And I'd like, I'd like to mention that because people come over to the dog park and they say, "We just left Soldatna Creek Park and it stinks there." But when you come to the dog park, it doesn't smell like dog waste. And that's because the, the community that visits that park cleans up after themselves. And for all the other people who don't clean up after, after themselves. And I was just there this, this morning, I usually, after I drop off my wife at work, I swing over there, me and the dog, get to throw a frisbee in, in Soldatna, and very, very, very little waste. It's very maintenance-free. One of the things that we do in the winter times, we carry our own water back and forth, so that there's always fresh water there. We have five, five-gallon trucks. It's a little community in, in itself, and we help, we help each other out. One year, we had a disabled vet who got evicted from an apartment, and he found himself an apartment, and then through some help, we paid for a airline ticket for his dog when he returned back home to Oklahoma. So, you know, you, you don't really see that, see that too often, and we just like, we, we like the dog park, we do a lot of maintenance. I hope we're not too much of a burden on Parks and Rec. There are some incidences, but we also police ourselves. So that's about it, and I want to thank you, everybody that's involved, the Parks and Rec people, you folks for investing some money in the dog parks last, last year, and, and we hope we have another great year. And it's dry there now, by the way, there's, there's no standing water.
Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, Mitch, for coming, and thank you for the heads up that maybe we do need to do a little more policing at Soldatna Creek Park.
Can I, can I add a thing? It's, the park is so nice that one of the things that happens is we get, abandoned dogs get dropped off there now. And you kind of know, I see them often, because I'm usually there around eight-thirty in the morning, and you find a dog there with a bowl of food, some toys, right, and a dish. And then, then you know that's somebody who's had to leave, and we're pretty good, usually by noon time, the word gets out, and there's a phone call made, and it ends up with one of our dog care, dog care groups, so. All righty, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any, any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised.
We had a gentleman.
Okay.
Troop six-six-nine guy.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Timothy Keck, and I live at four-six-eight-one-zero Grady Court, which is just outside the city limits. I am the Scout Master of Troop six-six-nine here in Soldatna, and I would just like to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight. We have a number of scouts who are working on citizenship in the community merit badge, and one of the requirements is to attend a local meeting of a government organization and see how the, the meeting goes and what happens. And so, thank you very much for allowing us to be here.
We appreciate it. Any questions? Vice Mayor Parker.
Well, as I mentioned to the, all the gentlemen, when I came in, my son was a member of Troop six-six-nine, so it has been a troop that has been in existence for thirty years or longer, and I really appreciate the work that you guys do, and thanks for coming to the meeting, and if you ever have any ideas or suggestions, make sure to reach out.
And former Mayor Anderson, Dr. Anderson was heavily involved with the Boy Scouts, and did Eagle Scout stuff for many, 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 many years, and he's greatly missed by not only the Boy Scouts, but everyone else in the community. Moving on, anyone else in the audience? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Elder Robert Gailey. My wife and I are serving as service missionaries here in Soldatna. We arrived last June. It's a self-funded mission for eighteen months, and we are primarily in the community. And one thing that we wanted to raise that really goes into more the Senior Citizen Center, or Senior Center, we work a lot in the community. We volunteer at the food bank, the hospital, Legacy Place, Aspen Cove, a number of food bank, a number of places. And through those volunteer efforts, we get referred to people that are homebound, that are, can't get out, and we, our role is really to serve them and see what needs there are. And I can't stress enough the importance of not forgetting the older generation. Many of the greatest generation in this country have died off, and the others, many are suffering. As we visit with these people, what we hear constantly is, "I feel forgotten, I feel invisible." Today, we were at the home of Curly Wright. Many of you may know Curly. He was a big pioneer in Soldatna, a mayor and other positions. They feel the same way. So anything we can do to provide funding, what we've noticed with the Senior Center, of all the places we volunteer, people there, even when they're ninety-two, thrive. And an interesting book that I would recommend is The Rabbit Effect. Interesting commentary about society. Loneliness has the same physical effect as smoking fifteen cigarettes a day or heavily drinking daily. It's, it's a disease. Anything we can do to prevent that is well worth the expense. I know we, we spend a lot on our youth, and that's important, the rising generation, but this older generation, the stories we hear, and the legacy of these people is so wonderful, and yet sad to see that they're forgotten. So maybe a plug for Senior Center, but in general, these people that feel forgotten. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council? Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on anything not appearing on the agenda? All right, seeing none, looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised there. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Assembly and Legislative Reports, and I see no representatives of the borough or the state legislature here, nor do I see any on the Zoom. And I'm afraid I can't resume. Yep. Woke him up again. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Testimony limited to three minutes per speaker, and the first one up is Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-five, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $2,400 in the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex Capital Projects Fund for a Donation Received from the Supporters of the Soldatna Fieldhouse, and introduced by the city manager, may have a motion to enact.
Motion to enact Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-five, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $2,400 in the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex Capital Projects Fund for a Donation Received from the Supporters of the Soldatna Fieldhouse.
Second, please. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This legislation actually came from Councilmember Hutchings, so she would have the information.
Would you like to make a report?
Well, you know, we all worked very, very hard on the Soldatna Fieldhouse, and I was one of those people that they gave the honor of being their treasurer and filing all their APOC statements and balancing their checking account. So when we got completely done paying all the bills, we ended up with around $2,400 left over, and since Jeff Delifka and I were the ones that really handled the money issues, I called him up, and I said, "Don't you think we need to give this to the city for the fieldhouse?" And he said, "Great idea." So I wrote the check.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, which is Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-five? Anyone here in the audience? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and there is no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Are there any objections to approving Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-five? Seeing and hearing none, Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-five is approved by, enacted by unanimous consent. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-six, Accepting Grant Funds from the United States Department of Agriculture and Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $1 Million in the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex Capital Projects Fund for the Soldatna Fieldhouse Project, introduced by city manager, may have a motion to enact. Vice Mayor Parker.
I would move the enactment of Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-six, because accepting grant funds from the USDA and increasing estimated revenue and appropriations by $1 Million for the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex Capital Projects Fund.
Let me have a second, please. Thank you, Mr. Carey. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this items, which is Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-six? Seeing no one here in the audience wishing to speak, we'll look at Zoom, and there's no hands raised there. Having no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council.
Did we get a city, a report from the city manager?
Uh, the report came from Ms. Hutchings.
No, that was on the other ordinance. This is the, this is the million dollars from USDA?
So, no, I did not ask.
That's okay.
So I will go back, and we will have your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to, this basically is a technical ordinance, accepting the funding from the USDA, which is the congressionally designated spending through Congresswoman Pelletola, and I really want to highlight that this was a long process, and we're super happy to have made it through, and very much thank USDA for working in partnership with us. We worked hard to get across this finish line, and we're super happy to have made it. The funding will be used to purchase the flooring for the fieldhouse.
Thank you. And seeing that I messed that up, we'll reopen the public comment. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-six? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised in Zoom. So having no one still wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I want to congratulate the city administration, the city manager, Public Works Director, Parks Director, for finding a way to be able to utilize this million dollars in a timely manner. When the appropriation was first made, because it was part of the infrastructure package, there was a requirement to use it for construction, and you had to use Buy America, Build America, and everything had to come from Buy America, Build America, which put a, a big red flag on us being able to use this million dollars. And there was at one point where the administration felt they were not going to be able to use this money at all. And as I said, I need to commend the administration, as well as the individuals at USDA, for coming to a solution and finding a way to be able to, to utilize this for what is going to be a magnis, magnificent project when it's complete, that will be utilized by everyone in this community, including all those young men sitting back there as they pursue different sports activities. So anyway, I, again, need to commend the administration for their diligence and, and being able to get it to the finish line.
Any other comments? We'll call for the vote on this.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker?
Impotic yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Kincaid?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-six passes on a six-zero vote. Next item on the agenda is new business, and that was all under the consent agenda. So we'll move on to mayor and council reports, mayor's proclamations and comments. I have another proclamation. Hopefully, I'll read without failing in the middle of it. Whereas our military families help sustain our fighting force, and it is important to emphasize and recognize the critical role of their dependents while the parents serve our nation, nations, and whereas the Alaska National Guard Child and Youth Program, Youth Council is committed to resolving the educational transition issues that are faced by these children and their families, and whereas the average military student faces transition challenges more than twice during high school, and most military children will attend six to nine different school systems throughout their lives, from kindergarten to twelfth grade. And whereas in nineteen eighty-six, former Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger designated the month of April as the month of a military child, and whereas April eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, is Purple Up Day, and has been dedicated to supporting military youth through the United States and territories. Whereas, purple indicates that all branches of the military are supported, Air Force Blue, Army Green, Navy Blue, Marine Red, and Coast Guard Blue. All are thought to combine together as a single color, purple. Now, therefore, I, Paul Whitney, mayor of the city of Soldatna, who hereby proclaim April twenty-twenty-five as month of the military child, and April eleventh, twenty-twenty-five as Purple Up Day, in the city of Soldatna, and encourage everyone to show appreciation, support, and understanding for the military children in our communities. Didn't quite make it. All residents are encouraged to wear purple on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, the color symbolizing all branches of military as a visible sign, as a visible show of support and appreciation for military children, dated this twenty-sixth day of May, March. Okay, back to mayor, council, uh, mayor comments. Today, I had the opportunity to sit in briefly on a, uh, today? No, it was yesterday. Rasmussen Foundation had a quarterly community Zoom meeting, and and it was very informative in different communities, being able to speak about things going on. Yep, try this again slowly. Also, on March the sixth, I had the opportunity to, uh, do a tour of the Fieldhouse with Senator Sullivan, conducted by CEO from the, uh, Public Works, Public, well, from the city. He's given more tours there than probably anyone that works at Disneyland, and Senator Sullivan was very impressed with the facility, was astounded by what we've done there, and what's going on, and what's going to happen in the future, and he is hoping to be able to attend the grand opening on August the fifteenth. Now, later in March, here a couple of, well, actually, two weeks ago, Mayor, Vice Mayor Parker and the city manager and I were able to attend the NLC meetings in Washington, DC, and at the same time, visit with our local representatives. And the, very informative, the NLC meetings, and the very good panel discussions that, on several issues affecting all of our communities, those panel discussions were, were great. Vice President Vance spoke to the audience at one of the noon time meetings. Parts of his speech were not very warmly received, but it was a very informative talk he gave. We were able to meet with Senator Murkowski and discuss the loss of funding she had worked on for the Mary Dale upgrade due to the continuing resolution that the legislature passed. We lost out on that. It was probably about two and a half million or more dollars that were gonna go for Mary Dale. That went away, and hopefully, she will be able to bring it back in the next round of budget talks coming up soon. We also discussed with her the loss of federal employees in Alaska, funding for statewide projects, and the turmoil that's currently going on within the federal government, and it's, it will take some time to sort through everything which is taking place, and what will happen long-term, not only for the country, but for the state of Alaska. A lot of things going on. We spoke about the city priorities, and how the Mary Dale project will now be back as number one on our list of priorities, and the other priorities on the list. The senator is hoping to attend the Fieldhouse grand opening, and pleased that the funding we received from the Department of Agriculture went through, and that we were able to able to maintain it after, before any of the freezes that happened. We also met with Representative Begich and spoke about the city priorities and concerns about DOT projects in the area and hoping that Representative Begich will be able to attend the field house grand opening in August. We also met with Senator Sullivan, where his enthusiasm for the opening of Alaska Potential Resource Development is front and center with the current administration. It was mostly a discussion on, on resource development that is opening up statewide and that he is a very strong supporter of the LNG gas project and is looking forward to construction starting soon. I think that is something that we all have hoped for and maybe even prayed for over the last 50 years and so hopefully it will happen soon. And then we had a meeting with the Department of Agricultural Staff to discuss the grant that we just approved and then the field house project and we had a very, very cordial conversation with them. There again, there is another organization that's in turmoil due to layoffs and people that would normally be doing one job are no longer there and somebody else that hasn't done it the last three or four years is trying to fill it. And the discussion there also concluded the process for completing the grant paperwork to close out and actually receive the money. I think I've covered any, anything about that. If there's anything that Vice Mayor Parker, the city manager would like to add to that? Okay. With that, I think I'll be quiet because I probably won't have a voice that'll last much longer. Next agenda item, next on the agenda is the council reports on boards and commission. March 5th, planning and zoning commission meeting, Mr. Chilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So main business item at the March 5th P&amp;Z meeting was focused on PZ Resolution 2025-003. This was a resolution that had previously had its hearing held at a meeting prior to the 5th pertaining to a conditional use permit for the potential development of a 12-unit multifamily development off of Cobuck. This is one that we were all made aware of due to the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision at that prior meeting to deny the conditional use permit. And as a council, we were informed that the developer had intended to appeal to the council at that point in time. The reason this was brought forward again at the 5th meeting was because code had, has requirements that when a commission denies a permit, they have to go on record and state their reasons why they are choosing to deny it. So really this was brought back to give opportunity for commissioners to go on record and state their reasons for denial of that permit and then allow for public feedback on those statements. So during that meeting, commissioners on the record stated their concerns to the development of it, mostly pertaining to things like safety around increased traffic in the area, issues with limited snow storage, increasing noise in the neighborhood, and then just general concerns about the density of 12 units on a property of its small size. However, after some discussion, they did consider the idea of bringing it back for reconsideration and they did make a motion to do so and that passed. So following the meeting on March 5th, there was a planning and zoning special meeting on March 18th to hold a hearing on the reconsideration of planning zoning Resolution 2025-003. At that meeting, there was pretty decent turnout from the community. I would say there was a large amount of opposition to it. There was also a number of community members that were in support of it. Just going to go through and highlight some of the points on that. So a lot of the opposition again was concerns about snow accumulation and hauling that off. And then again, the density, there are a number of community members from the study and concerns about potential impacts on child safety in that neighborhood, all of which were pretty, I feel pretty effectively addressed by the developer and, and his team. Additionally, in support, there were people that were talking about the dire need for housing in our area and then the economic boosts with bringing in new residents and then their interaction with our local businesses in that area. Ultimately, the commission made a couple motions to modify the conditional use permit by requiring, first of all, that there be a solid privacy fence that would be established around the perimeter of the property. That was passed and then additionally, there was another motion which passed, which added a conditional requirement for bike storage racks that be created on the property. This wasn't a conditional, a condition to the permit, but I guess at a prior meeting there was concerns given about with that many units, there'd be a lot of just miscellaneous personal items spread out due to limitations of storage. The developer had come back at the meeting and said that he'd amended his design to include storage spaces for each individual unit on there to minimize people just leaving clutter out on the property. And ultimately, it was actually a unanimous vote from the P&amp;Z commission to approve the permit. So as you all are aware, following the approval of that conditional use permit, the development is moving forward and the appeal from the developer, which we were all notified of, has been rescinded. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Chilson? Saying none, we'll move on to the next report, which is the March 20th, 2025 Airport Advisory Board Meeting, Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. It was a very productive board meeting at the airport commission and a couple of items to report on. As you know, the Division of Forestry is going to be moving their base of operations and has leased some acreage from the city down at the airport and those forestry leases have been fully executed by the state of Alaska. So you'll see the focus of their activities during this fire season, moving, starting to move to the airport area. And with runway 7-25, the city had received funding from FAA for that and all the funds have been received by the city and that project is completely closed out. So things are going well at the, at the airport and they're looking for an airport commissioner. Should there, anybody know someone?
Any questions for Vice Mayor Parker? Saying none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know that you had later on your script to talk about the April 9th work session. However, I do want to highlight it at this time. It is truly about all things field house. The, where we are in construction, how the construction process has been going. By the way, the signage went up today on the field house. It looks amazing. But all things construction, where we are, what still needs to be done, completed before grand opening. Also about funding, where we are with the bonds and the fund, the available funds, about staffing, about operations, the fee schedule, the fees that go along with the facility, revenue that will go along with the facility as well. All things field house. The meeting starts at 4:30 and they're doing a team approach. We're all presenting on the field house and providing you with information that you have asked along the way. And also it is time for an update, especially on the construction, where we are on funding as well. So be prepared for that and be prepared to ask questions. We hope to be able to answer your questions before you ask them, but bring the questions because we do want to make it a really dynamic meeting. 4:30 on April 9th. That's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for the city manager? Saying none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is council comments. Mr. Chilson.
So.
Well, well, public comments. I've been wondering for years what the walking pneumonia is and I've managed to find out twice in the last 30 days, so my mind is not necessarily always here. So next is public comments. So any members of the public would like to speak on any item? Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. So now we will try this again and go to council comments. Mr. Chilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today I had the exciting opportunity to participate in the first inaugural, first inaugural Job Shadow Day that was put on in partnership between Soldatna High School and Soldatna Chamber of Commerce. So as you may know, Kenea Central High School has been doing this for some time and this is the first time, at least in recallable memory, that Soldatna High School is doing this. And it was a very exciting turnout today. We had a wide array of different agencies that are represented that came in and provide mentorship opportunities for students. I myself had a kid that joined me in coming over to my IT department and doing tours of different data network infrastructure. And it's just cool to see kind of spark excitement among kids and their interest where they want to go with their careers and just our future generation growing here locally. And I look forward to seeing where this goes and I know that the chamber is going to be working diligently with the Soldatna High School Counseling Department to continue to grow this in the coming years. So I would just say to anyone listening, if you're interested in being a mentor, reach out to the Soldatna High School Counseling Department, Soldatna Chamber of Commerce, and just let them know to get you on the list for next year.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. A brief update on some of the findings and what heard at National League of Cities meetings. The quote from National League of Cities is be ready and be resilient. So I think it's something that no matter where you are, always be ready and be resilient. I found that there were a lot of similarities and common threads amongst communities across the United States. And the one that particularly we talk a lot about in Alaska is unfunded mandates. And this was something that came up at National League of Cities and that unfunded mandates for communities across the United States are an issue. When you look at the priorities for National League of Cities, they're very similar to the priorities that we have here. Housing, infrastructure, public safety, community resilience, and then streamlining programs and regulations. So there is a great deal of value and some of the things where I was having outreach with other communities from areas across the United States and was able to get from them. They have a repurposed park program that is something I was able to share with the city manager and maybe something we can learn from as we grow in our community. And then one session I was at was there was a discussion about artificial intelligence and do communities have a policy with respect to how that is used? And one community raised their hand and was the person I was sitting next to and so I asked for a copy of that and they shared it with, with us and again, provided that with city manager if it's something that the administration thinks that we need to do here in our community. The one thing that I was able to do as the president of AML, I attended a number of meetings where it was presentations with state league meetings and the presidents of those state, other state leagues and their executive directors. And I was able to give a update on things going on here in Alaska. And one of the things that I was able to discuss was because it is going to be an issue at the next election is ranked choice voting. And had a number of individuals from other places in the United States that came and talked about it. And there was one community, Fargo, North Dakota, adopted ranked choice voting for that city. And after Fargo, North Dakota adopted ranked choice voting for that city, the legislature then and now has banned ranked choice voting in the state of North Dakota because of what they did in, in Fargo. And I, I found that to be quite, quite interesting. So kind of a summary and I won't repeat what the mayor said about our, our visits with the congressional delegation or the folks from the federal administration. I want to thank Soldatna Elementary School for the artwork in the chambers and that we have new artwork that is, and for our friends from 669, we now have every six weeks, we change out the artwork and there are schools around from the peninsula that will be submitting art and we will put it on the walls here. So maybe one of your schools might be doing this in the future. Interesting that the city manager brought up about the work session because I was going through some paperwork and cleaning out some files and I came across in, on October 9th, 2018, we had a work session and it was on the field house. And so it'll be interesting to see and compare the packet from seven years ago, six and a half years ago, as to what we have in, in April. And again, six, six years, six months between the two field house meetings. I want to thank the gentleman from Troop 669 for attending. I hope you receive all the merit badges that you need and are able in the future to complete your projects and, and become an Eagle Scout. It's fun, fun to watch and I commend you guys and thank you for coming tonight. And again, I reach out to our friends at Sohigh as they deal with the loss of one of their students. So know you're, we're thinking of you and as you're out there enjoying the outdoors, make sure you are being safe and smart. Thank you.
Mr. Carey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. I was very impressed with the discussion about the dog park and the idea of the citizens and the work they did. And, and again, it's first time, my knowledge at least, I've heard people saying that they moved to a town because they heard the good reports about this service and, and this community mindedness of people. I thought that was, for me, that was very interesting and I appreciate the work being done there. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for the military child resolution and the proclamation that you did on that. And again, as always, we want to remember spouses and as military child, and again, some of the remarks, I was at 10 different schools between first and eighth grade. And so again, I just, I found that very interesting and our support for the military, critically important, particularly now with what's going on. And the last thing I just want to mention to the young people that are here, and again, Vice Mayor mentioned about merit badges and again, the striving and that goal and, and developing that. And I want to encourage you very much to consider getting involved with student council as you progress on, if you haven't already. And also again, I hope you notice that we have a student representative on the city council and again, another thing that could be done. I don't want anyone to worry about the mayor, but I just want to say, you can also be thinking about being the mayor of this city someday. Okay? And that's a real thing that can happen to someone that grows up in a town. You can end up being the mayor and, and the very best merit badge, merit badge that you'll ever receive is by being a good citizen. And that's what you're learning about. And again, a good country, a good republic requires good citizens. I just want to thank you for the work that's being done and the adults that work with you because it's critical to the formation and the continued development of this country. Thank you for being here. Believe it or not, I was a Boy Scout also, a long, long, long time ago. Okay, Mr. Nelson?
No comments tonight.
Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I just wanted to bring everybody up to date. I have recently been put on the carts board as their treasure. My favorite spot is always treasure, I guess. But we have a new board out there. There's Tim Dillon as president, Tyson Cox as vice president. And as I said, I'm treasure. And what I'm really excited about is we've got a new reservation system that they've had an effect for about three months. And you call in and you make your reservation and instead of having to sit out there in the snow 15 minutes before they arrive and 15 minutes after, it's tied to your cell phone and they will let you know when they're going to arrive in two minutes, which is really remarkable. Our, our reservations have gone way up because of that. It's so user friendly. So I'm happy about that. And the other thing I'm happy about is that I have been working on scholarships and one of my favorite jobs is scholarships. And so I've been working with the Alaska Community Foundation and we have the Ron and Terry Davis Scholarships and we have the Carl Seaman Scholarship. So it's, you know, knowing the fact that I've known both of these, and these people that have provided these scholarships, it's, it's an extra blessing for me. So just, I guess, tooting my horn, sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Whackler? Ms. Whackler.
They're not here anymore, and I think I already thanked them, but I wanted to thank all the community members that came out, um, in support of the Senior Center. Um, I think all of you know, it's an important organization for our community, is an essential service, um, much like the others that can make a community thrive. And I'm happy to see that it's definitely, as far as, um, enthusiasm for the program, I'm, I'm seeing a positive, definitely, from what it was two years ago. We'll see, uh, on the financial side, if they're able to turn all that around. Um, but I am happy to see smiling faces again. That was really important to me two years ago, and that was heartbreaking. It was absolutely heartbreaking, so, um, loved that they all came out and used up every parking spot in that parking lot. And of course, you guys too, love seeing this room full, not as much as Dave does, though. He wants all of these chairs full every time. So, thank you for community members, and, um, also that 907 navigation app. Um, I wanna reiterate to you all how amazing this can be for our community, and it's just a resource that, she skipped over the calculator area really quick. It's not a calculator in a form of like calculator that you have. It's a, a central tool for anyone, people who are out in the community helping someone. If they're like, you know, worried about whether they can leave a domestic abuse situation or whether they can afford XYZ, you can pull that out immediately and be like, can you qualify for this? Can you qualify for that? And you can just see it in real time. You can look up in, income limitations for things, and I think it's gonna expand to, you know, free school lunches, or like, it, it can only get better. Um, and as people submit things to it and we get more resources, it could be a really cool way to, like, if we have a situation where, you know, God forbid something happens, where we have another trailer park closing, and we have citizens out there who don't know what to do and don't know what, where to go, we can send them to some resource center that is all together. We can find resources for them that already exist. So, we don't need to like reinvent the wheel and create new programs. We can just go, I know the programs exist. I don't know where to find them. Oh, yeah, we have this resource here, and it's really easy to navigate, and I just want everybody to go on there, look at it, see if there's any resources that you think would be great added to it, and just keep building it. Um, we're really fortunate to be sort of a focal point for it, and then to have the state resources help us grow it. Um, I think it's probably gonna become, of course, it is statewide, but they're just gonna keep adding more and more areas of concentration. But us, we're lucky on the Central Peninsula, and we could really use it. So, thank you for that presentation, and, um, have a good week, everybody.
Now to our youngest member, Ms. Kincaid.
One second. Okay, so I was gonna talk on our first, it's, it is Solotna High School's first, um, Job Shadow Day, and I was able to participate, and I was very grateful for the opportunity, and I saw you there, and I thought it was cool to have, um, different people involved and people that I recognized in the community, and then seeing how they're involved with, um, our high school. And it was a really great opportunity to have people come together, and it was awesome seeing, um, some of my classmates and myself finding opportunities to be figuring out their future and figuring out different opportunities of how they can see what sparks in their joy. So, at the high school, our spring sports are starting up, which is exciting for everyone. I know I'm excited for all the snow to melt, and so we can finally get started outside. And I also wanted to talk on the loss of our Sohigh Student Tucker Challenge, and we all are working together and helping each other and supporting each other the best we can. And just love from our community would be great. People just kinda need connection and just support from each other, and we're doing good at Sohigh with it. But yeah, thank you.
Just to add a comment here about the dog park. I remember when that was brought before the council for, um, creation. Uh, believe it or not, we did have opposition to that. And then, like you said, it's probably one of the most popular places around, and, um, it's a good, I'm glad we did it. Very glad. So, meeting, our executive session, there is no reason for one tonight. Uh, meeting announcements, the April 2nd, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting has been canceled. April 3rd, 2025 Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting at 5:30. April 9th, 2025 City Council Work Session at 4:30 PM on the Field House. And April 9th, 2025, the City Council meeting, uh, 6:00 PM. And having nothing further on our agenda, we are adjourned.